Okay, good evening. This is the Board of Selectmen, continuation of the public hearing, Town of Eastlime. You can rise and recite your pledge of allegiance. At seven o'clock?
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands on a nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So let me read the notice. Notice is hereby given of a public hearing to be held by the Eastlime Board of Selectmen at seven o'clock, 7:00 PM, September 3rd, 2025, at Eastlime Town Hall, One Way Pennsylvania Avenue, Niantic, Connecticut, to continue the discussion of the following in ordinance establishing moratorium on new sewer construction over certain limits and in applications for allocation of wastewater treatment capacity. Copies of the full text of the proposed ordinance, as well as exhibits handed out at the August 6th, 2025, public hearing, are on file for public inspection at the Office of the Town of Eastlime Town Clerk, One Way Pennsylvania Avenue, Niantic, Connecticut, and at www.eeltownhall.com, to which reference may be had. Interested persons are invited to attend and be heard, and that was dated, this dated Eastlime, Connecticut, on the 6th day of August, 2025. Okay, the Eastlime Board of Select. So we're here tonight, and is there anyone that would like to address? Yes, Tim Bleesdale?
Good evening. Tim Bleesdale from the Town Attorney's Office. We're here on a continuation of our public hearing from August 6th, and what the board had directed us to do, the Town Attorney's Office, was to go take another look at the duration limitations in the proposed ordinance and come back with some proposals for specific cutoff dates and perhaps some other forms of, you know, public accountability to make sure that the public has a way and this board has a way, to make sure that the commission is working towards expanding its capacity. So you should have in your packet some revised language that you can consider, and there's two different versions of it. One was a clean copy and the other was, showed the track changes in Microsoft Word, just so you can see. But basically, all that has changed is in Section B of the proposed ordinance. So it proposes an expiration date of December 31st, 2028. We settled on that date in consultation with professional staff for the Water and Sewer Commission, and my basic understanding of it is that we can anticipate the process of expanding the New London Treatment Facility, it's probably going to take longer than that. But this is sort of a, maybe a midway point where we can, you know, stop and check in, and the ordinance, if you adopt this language, would have this board do that check-in with a public hearing, you know, in December of 2028. In the meantime, it keeps in there a requirement that the board repeal the moratorium if the Sewer Commission notifies you that it's obtained treatment capacity through some other means. So if they say to you that they've got this capacity, then the ordinance would require you to repeal the moratorium. And then it also creates a reporting mechanism, so the commission, starting on October 31st of 2026, will have to submit a report to the board that summarizes the current status of its, you know, the capacity snapshot. So that's the chart that Ben North had prepared and shared with you at your, at the first part of this public hearing, you know, accounting for where all of our capacity has gone. So it'll include that, so you can see what has changed. It will also include a summary of the efforts that the commission's actually made, since you received your last report, to try to obtain funding or whatever else they do to try to expand that capacity. And it would also give the status, so let's say they had come to some agreement and there was, there was work actually being done on the facility to expand treatment capacity in New London, it would also include a status report on that, so let you know where that is. And then any other information that the Water and Sewer Commission thinks might be helpful for this board in monitoring their progress and their efforts to try to expand capacity. And then the last piece of this new language is that it gives, it creates a mechanism for public participation in deciding whether or not to continue the moratorium. So it provides that if this board decides it wants to extend or consider extending the moratorium, you know, for additional periods, you have to have a public hearing, so the public would have an opportunity to comment in that way. So that's really all I have to present on the new language tonight. I did want to mention that I had provided a draft motion for the board that referenced in it that, you know, if you decided to adopt this, that you were adopting it as presented at the August 6th hearing. You should change that date if you decide to use that motion to reflect the fact that we've presented new language tonight. And then, in addition to that, Ben North is here if you have any technical questions about treatment capacity or anything like that.
Thank you, appreciate you.
Sure.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to address the Board of Selectmen on this issue? Yes, please. Just identify yourself for the record, please.
Excuse me, I'm a little under the weather, actually, I think I have the flu. So stay back. So...
If you'd just identify yourself.
Yep, I was just about to do that. Glen Russo, 288 Marbury Road, Middletown, Connecticut. My company owns a substantial parcel of land, over 200 acres, in Eastlime. I've owned that property for over 20 years, almost 25 years now, and it's a substantial piece. I think we all know the location of it. It has a mile of waterfront on Niantic Bay, and it's been the subject of numerous affordable housing applications over the past 25 years or so. And so I'm here to oppose this motion or this moratorium, which really is a moratorium against developers. The town has conveniently exempted 99.999% of the town because all residential individuals who want to build a single-family house, they're exempt from the moratorium, is my understanding. It's really a moratorium against developers, 5,000 gallons or 20 units, and obviously that's by design. So I think, and I don't know why, everything is... Oh, you have to switch it over? Yeah, please. So last time I was here, we had some real technical difficulties, the screen was split in half, and I think we've worked those out. But we have to go back to 1999, 2000, when I bought the property and I first came forward with this affordable housing application, and the town basically decided that they were going to attack the affordable housing and deny it before they ever heard a single presentation on our part. And they were going to do so by using sewer as the key weapon, and this is reflected in minutes which were taken down from a meeting with the entire staff and their attorney. Now, the city of Eastlime has been lying about the availability of sewer repeatedly, and specifically, the planning director, the director of Public Works, this first selectman and chairman of the Water and Sewer Commission, not the present one, the one at that time, they made public statements, and that's reflected in these minutes here, that our property fell without, outside the sewer shed and was not entitled to sewer. And that was later proven to be a false, a number of false statements, which they made at a public hearing. They used that information to, in court, to convince the judge that we didn't have sewer. And in fact, our application was denied, and one of the reasons it was denied, the judge cited lack of sewer. Several years later, the Department of Environmental Protection wrote a letter saying that in 2002, they made a mistake, DEEP made a mistake, that they were told by the city or the town that the property fell outside the sewer shed. I met with them, and that's in this letter here, that I met with them and I showed them my drawing, and in that meeting, he said, "Oh, you're in the sewer shed." Two years, they couldn't get a single town official to agree how to read a map. So the person from DEEP writes a letter and says, "This property actually does fall within the sewer shed." So then the town shifts its tactics from, "You don't get sewer, therefore you don't get a development because you're outside the sewer shed and you're not entitled to sewer," to, "Okay, we admit, you caught us, you do fall in the sewer shed, but now there's no capacity." And three times, the courts found that Eastlime had abused their discretion. They first found that the town abused their discretion, this is not me telling you this, this is a, this is a state court judge saying that, "When you denied me any sewer, you abuse your discretion. When you gave me 13,000 gallons, you abused your discretion. And when you gave me 14,000 gallons, you abuse your discretion." Of course, in between those, years passed by, tens of thousands of dollars in attorney's fees, but the town is just playing the long game, going back to their original strategy, "Use sewer, use sewer, sewer is exempt from the affordable housing, and we've got them." And that's what the memo says. That's exactly what the minutes from the meeting say. So the judge basically grants my application on the fourth attempt, and says a bunch of bad things about the town, abusive, abusive discretion. Never got an apology from the town, not once. This town misrepresented to a court on three separate occasions, misrepresented is a nice word, it's a polite word for say, lied, and abused their discretion and violated my rights, my landowner rights, and I never once got an apology from the town, not one time. But we prevailed and we got our sewer allocation that we requested. And the last time I was here, you couldn't read what was said, and the town was very upset that they had lost. In the first selectman, he pretty much stated what really was bothering the town, and that was the courts. They were really getting in the way of the town abusing their authority. And so Selectment Nicholson says that the commission should have the ability to oversee management of sewer systems without court interference. It's a nice way of putting it. The judges can't force us to put their sewers in there. Of course, he was referring back to the advice that he got from his attorney, that sewers are exempt from the affordable housing statute. But the town's conduct was so egregious that the courts found them to be an abuse of their authority. And so Exhibit Number Five really gets to the heart of the matter. The sewer department and town officials are stalling, lying, throwing a roadblocks, illegal roadblocks, and at the same time, the Board of Selectmen, this body here, writes a memo and passes a resolution saying that my property should be left as open space for the benefit of the community. Do you know how many times Eastlime is offered to purchase my property? Zero. Zero times. They want free property. They confiscate, they don't use, like they used to do, the king used to use the swords, they use the pen, and they just regulate it out of existence, and they regulate our rights out of existence, and that's what you're going to do tonight. You're going to pass a moratorium that apparently is going to limit my ability to use my property for three years. Am I going to get an exemption of property taxes? Why this is going on? Because everybody else in town is going to be able to build their houses and do whatever they have to do, but not me, not the developers, because we dare to bring affordable housing to the state, to the city of Eastlime, which is in violation of the State Affordable Housing Act. You're on the list of the people, and you know what the bar is? You can have 90% of your housing can be unaffordable, and that would be okay, but you're worse than that. You're over 90% unaffordable. And the thing is, the town not only doesn't care, they're lying, conniving, and scheming to get around state law. And so here's a resolution, basically saying, "We want this guy's property. We want it for open space." That's an official resolution passed by this body here. And so let's talk about this made-up crisis. It's all made up, there's no real crisis. Well, there is a crisis, but it's not sewer. It's another crisis, which I'll get to in a moment. So this is the CAG report. So New London hired a consulting firm to evaluate the plant, and they basically, in the report, they say that Eastlime's current usage is 1,100,000 gallons. Okay? That was back in 2012. 2012. 1 million, remember that number, 1,100,000. Here are the Eastlime sewer flow history. Back in 2010, 1,650,693, and it gives you every year from 2010 to 2017, and you can see the numbers down below. And then it goes from 2015 to 2024. So last year, the full year, the city's average flow for the year, 951,313 gallons per day. Okay? It was more usage in 2012. It is, was more usage in 2010. Over the last 15 years, 14 and a half years, the amount of sewer that the town has used has gone down. No moratorium in the last 15 years. And in fact, in 2025, the first four months of the year, negative 29%, negative 8%, negative 16%, negative 14%, and then 1% more. So 2025 is on record of probably being the lowest that you're going to monitor that you're going to use. But don't forget, forget 2025, in that it's half a year, but not a full year, and you've got, precipitation plays a role in your sewer usage because you have infiltration in the groundwater and your stormwater system if it's not completely separated. So a stormwater pipe with stormwater could end up in the sewer system, shouldn't, but it could. Okay? Infiltration and the lack of separation between stormwater and sewer. And so, but if you look at the big picture, the big trends, you were at about 1,100,001, now you're at about 951,000. Your usage has gone down. I don't know how you could possibly justify a moratorium when your usage has gone down or hasn't gone up in 2010 to 2015 years. 15 years, you're flat or declining in your sewer usage, yet we need a moratorium. Very, very, very strange set of circumstances. So then we go on to this sewer capacity allocation, which really, the numbers are just cooked. They change it around every time. They like a project, they find sewer, they don't like a project, they lose sewer. But if you do the average daily flow, two-year average, 2024, October, roughly a year ago, you have 806,000 gallons of your average two-year flow, 806, it's still highlighted there. And it says down here, "The estimated future development needs based on the previous assessment, last updated 2023, 176,000." So you're saying you have a negative capacity of 193,000 gallons. Sewer capacity remaining, negative 193. It's gobbledygook, but okay, it's your numbers, I'll use your numbers. May of 2025, you actually are using less sewer, on a two-year average now, 700,000 gallons. Your sewer usage, not spikes, peaks, and valleys, on average, is down. And your capacity was dramatically improved. You went from a negative 193 to a negative 25,000. I don't believe, it's not really negative, it's just, they just use the shell game with the capacity and what future lots might take, they've never done an in-depth study. There's no in-depth study as to infiltration, separation, or land density use. It's all just made-up numbers to justify denying an application. So 2023, there is a applicant for some housing, Pelletier, I think it's Pelletier, Niantic LLC. So they came in, they wanted 110,000 gallons of sewer, and the city grants 75,000 gallons of sewer, 2023. Now, the interesting part, this is why these numbers are just gobbledygook, you look at the Eastlime total allocation remaining, 1,397 gallons. So how do you give an applicant 75,000 gallons when you're saying you only have excess capacity or total allocation remaining, what's left, of 1,397 gallons? How's that even possible? Well, you just go over and dip over into the magical, "Oh, this is going to be used somewhere else sometime in the future," which hasn't been used in 15 years, right? Went from 1.1 million down to 900-something thousand. So this is what the town did. They gave 75,000 gallons away, 2022. The application came in in late 2022, this analysis was done in December, and by the time the applicant got a vote, it was March of 2023, at which they got 75,000 gallons. No moratorium. No talk of a moratorium. And in fact, the town has gained back 75,000 gallons of sewer capacity, because the sewer capacity that was granted, that development never went forward. And so the Sewer Commission voted to terminate that allocation. So now, you're sitting today with 75,000 gallons more than you had when you gave it away in 2023. And yet, somehow, this justifies a moratorium. It doesn't make any sense. It's just a shell game. The town has an agenda, they're going through their agenda, and that's what this is all about. This is not a sewer moratorium, this is an affordable housing moratorium. That's what it is. Now, Mr. Chairman, First Selectman, isn't it correct that the town was seeking a waiver or a moratorium on affordable housing? Isn't that true before this application was filed?
I'm not going to comment during the presentation.
Well, is there any reason for you to say that it's not true? I'll make the assertion that it is true, because I know it's true, because I heard it from you. You told me that. So this is just a form of the affordable housing moratorium, because a house, affordable housing moratorium, very hard to get, very difficult to get. You have to prove all types of activity, and you have to score, and very difficult. I don't think the town would have gotten one, based on their track record. But this, in effect, does the same thing, with no oversight. The state doesn't have to score you, you just get to do it on your own. So then we get to the discussion on the sewer subcommittee. Now, it's my understanding, I went through the minutes, now, at the last meeting, Ben North said, "This has been ongoing for years, two, three years." So I went through the minutes of the last three years. As far as I can see, and correct me if I'm wrong, the subcommittee was created Does that sound roughly correct? Through the chair, I'm sorry, through the chair, I'd like to ask the director or the engineer if the subcommittee for sewer allocation was formed on or about July 10th, 2023. That's what the minutes say.
Are you asking me for...
I'm asking permission to address, wait, normally I would, I would go to the chair to address anybody, so I'm asking the chair that I would like to address the engineering department, so that they can confirm that there was a subcommittee created, and it was created on or about July of 2023.
So the format tonight is to address the Board of Selectmen, and the presentation to the board is not a dialogue between the board members and the presenter? So you're free to present.
Well, it can be, if the chairman wants to have a dialogue. If the chairman doesn't want to have a dialogue, then obviously there won't be a dialogue.
No, I don't want to have a dialogue.
Okay. So then I will represent for the record that the subcommittee on capacity was formed July 2023. According to the town's minutes, there is no record of that subcommittee meeting for the rest of the year. And in 2024, that subcommittee had one meeting, one subcommittee meeting, not a regular meeting that they talked about it, but a subcommittee meeting. They had one meeting in all of 2024 that lasted a grand total of one hour and 45 minutes. Okay? This is a situation so dire that you guys have to stop all development, seize all property rights for people like me, that I cannot use my property for a year before I even find out what you guys have done in up to three years. that I cannot use my property for a year before I even find out what you guys have done in up to three years. Up to three years that I'm supposed to sit idle and have my rights as a landowner violated yet again. Because this, this, this is not a legal, uh, more, it won't be a legal moratorium when you pass it. And it's, again, according to the records, and I'm, I, since I can't ask the engineer, I'm going to assume that when they had a meeting, they had, they had an agenda and they had minutes. Because they did when they formed it, and they did when they had one meeting after that. They have not met this year. The subcommittee meeting, the subcommittee has not met, according to the town records. There's no record of an agenda, there's no record of any minutes. So, these are minutes from a meeting of the regular Sewer Commission. And this is a commissioner talking. And so he says here, having served on this commission for over twenty-two years, Mr. Bond said he repeatedly heard discussions about future needs, but feel little progress has been made. He argued that the commission has missed opportunities, so forth and so on. And he's, and he's highlighted, there's a hundred thousand gallons of available capacity just sitting there, not being utilized. And then Mr. Murphy chimes in and says, added that this issue has been debated for decades. Decades. And yet, now is the time, for some strange reason, when your sewer capacity is going down, I mean, your capacity, your usage is going down, your allocation's going up. Okay? For some reason, this is the time to create a moratorium that basically allows everybody to build except for developers, a handful of developers. Another commission member says, available, available capacity was a hundred and eighty-nine thousand gallons in one recent year, but a four-month average in two thousand twenty-five shows three hundred and eighty-three thousand gallons. And she wants to know why. You don't even know how many gallons of allocation, somewhere between three hundred and three hundred thousand. The exact number is not important, what's important is the trend. Okay? Two thousand ten, you were using one point one million gallons. Fifteen years later, you're using less. That's a fact. Those numbers are from your engineering department. And so, the issue is, what's really going on? What's really driving this? Because it can't be sewer, because it does, the numbers just don't make sense. And so, what is really driving this moratorium? So what's really driving this moratorium is the fact that my property recently went on the, on the market by C.B. Richard Ellis. And that goes directly conflicts with, and ruins the town's plan to have my property be open space. So how do we stop a development? Oh, two hundred and thirty-five acres. I have a hundred and eighteen thousand gallons, that represents a small portion of my property. So let's make sure, of which, I had to go to court and fight and win four lawsuits. Four. Before the, the, the town finally gave in and gave me the one hundred and eighteen thousand gallons that the court ordered you to give me. Not that you gave me because you decided, whoa, jeez, you know, maybe we're wrong, maybe we haven't done, been playing fair. The court ordered you to give what I was entitled to from the very beginning. No apology, nothing. You, you withheld my rights for years. Okay? And this moratorium is you guys are going to make sure, according to Nickerson, that the courts don't get into fear anymore. That's what this moratorium is about. It's about the resolution that this body passed saying it's in the best interest of the public that this property remain open space. That's what all this is about. It's a moratorium to stop affordable housing, to stop the sale of this property, to devalue it. That's all this is about. And the numbers prove that. And this is what it's all about. This is your resolution that my property should never be developed. That's what it says. It's exactly what it says. Azuragachi Hills is specially suitable for preservation of open space and that the public interest is best served by ensuring that this property remain in its present undeveloped state for use for future generations of the public. That was a resolution passed by the Eastline Board of Selectmen. And it all comes back, it all circles back to the very beginning. How do we stop the development of this property? We passed resolutions, we lied in court, we lied at public hearings. How do we kill this development? We'll do it through the sewer. And it was laid out in nineteen ninety-nine, and your strategy as a town has not changed one bit. That's all this is about. You want to preserve this property, but you don't want to pay for it. And that's what it all comes down to. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board?
Mr. Chairman, if he's going to testify, I want the ability to testify after him because I was, I was not given the ability to question him. It's not fair for have, to have him come in after and say things and not have him be questioned in some manner.
No questions, if you want to make a comment afterwards, of course, it'll be recorded that.
Hello, good evening, Ben North, Eastline Water and Sewer. I wanted to obviously clarify a few things that Mr. Russo addressed. Obviously, he's very upset about the twenty-year ordeal that he's had with the town and, and I, I really don't want to go back twenty years and try to understand what happened back then. You know, that this is a new administration, I'm new staff. I won't tell you how old I was back when this property was originally purchased, but what I can tell you is that Mr. Russo, and, and, you know, I can understand his position. He, he's looking to develop this property. He's invested money in it, and he'd like to see that through. He has been given a hundred and eighteen thousand four hundred gallons of capacity. I don't know how long that's been, I'm guessing it's been about a decade that he's had it for. When I started in twenty nineteen, it was still something that was on the books that we understood was an obligation as part of our sewer capacity. And so that's something that we've always carried in our numbers as, as we're looking at this. And we would certainly have more capacity if we weren't holding the one eighteen that Mr. Russo has been allocated. And there's a few things that I wanted to clarify, and obviously, there's different reports that you saw just now. These reports are things that my office produces, and they look at, at the sewer capacity in different metrics. One that was used, I think it's a little bit unfair because it, it, and it goes back and it looks at, you know, one point one million as what the town had back in twenty-ten, and now that's slightly less. What that report actually doesn't show you is that that's an allocation of the state's capacity as well as the town's capacity. The town itself has actually never exceeded one million gallons of capacity, and that's about what the town has in allocation, and that's what we're trying to protect. So the, the Gates Prison, the Orc Sprint, the Orc Prison, Camp Net, and also the, the Rocky Neck State Park portion that was given to, to Point at Woods is all part of that capacity allocation calculation. And so that, that's why you're seeing that, obviously, Gates closed. I always have to remember Gates is, you know, the gates have been closed, so that one's not open anymore. After that happened, the, the state sewer capacity, or I should say its sewer usage, did drop. And it does show that in the town's overall capacity of what it's sending to New London. But remember, we only have one million gallons of capacity. The state has five hundred thousand, you know, roughly. So that capacity that the state has, and I want to reiterate that, is not capacity that we can just dip into. That's capacity that the state has allocated essentially to itself through agreements that it had when the sewer system was first constructed, through agreements with the Clean Water Act that was assigned to the state for its facilities. And I believe the state even allowed some participate in financially paying for portions of the system so that it could benefit from that connection. So that, I wanted to clear that up first, and that's, that's why you're seeing a reduction in, in some of the overall usage because the state's facilities have actually dropped in usage. But our usage has increased ever since. Especially since Rocky Neck Village came online, that was affordable housing. The Brookside Apartments, that's partially affordable housing. So there's several examples as well that the Water and Sewer Commission has granted allocation for, for affordable housing. So the fact that somehow our regulation isn't workable, or, or it's too arduous, or, or, you know, simply too difficult for developers to get it passed is simply not true because we have developments right now that have, have gone through that process, and I just named two of them, that have gone through that and have also mostly built or completely built out. I saw one of those figures up there, and unfortunately, I, I can't pull up every single document that Mr. Russo has shown you to point out why a certain thing looked the way it did. But one of the allocations showed a very negative number, and that was during a period of time where we were considering adding a, a development up on Pennsylvania Ave, and we were also considering the implications that it would have and extending a sewer system through Pennsylvania Ave as well, which did give us a hugely negative number. You know, we knew that to do something like that would be a, a huge amount of capacity that was needed for the system. You know, we only have a million gallons a day. Okay, and ten percent right now is already allocated to Mr. Russo. And then another, I think it was about thirteen percent overall was going to be allocated to that facility. So we knew that we were in trouble. We, we had been talking about possible avenues. We have sent letters to New London and Waterford and to the state to ask for allocation, to maybe borrow allocation. We did that, I want to say, as recently as about six or seven months ago, where we reiterated to the other two towns that we were looking for allocations. Those, obviously, those other two towns are also in, in building booms, and they don't want to give up a very precious commodity for Eastline. Although they'd love to if they could, and if it was something that would be easy to do, I think we all would have done that already. But, you know, this is the situation that we're in right now. So I wanted to just clarify those two things. I, again, I don't think there's any malice, at least not on my part or my department's part, to try to limit growth. As, as Mr. Russo had pointed out, there are commission members that have mixed feelings about this because obviously we want to be able to provide a utility and a service to, to our community. We want to be able to be there and support any kind of activity that the town wants to support. But we also need to make sure that, we need to look far enough ahead and say, hey, you know, if we approve this and we approve that, you know, we're going to really be in a bind if all these things really start coming online. So that, that's why we, we need to try to look down the road here and start to make plans. And we have made a lot of strides in doing that. It's something that we've been working with Waterford and New London on, and I think this is really the first time, really, since my involvement with, with working with New London and with Eastline, that we're gaining some traction and actually expanding the, the plant itself. So I think that's really promising. You're going to hear things in a few months where we're going to be choosing a design engineer and coming up with a master plan of what it looks like to upgrade the facility, what things might be out there that could improve it. The AECOM report, as Mr. Russo had showed you, is a little bit of a snapshot of that. It was done about fifteen years ago now, so things have changed a little bit. But there is a little bit of a roadmap there, and it's going to involve building more aeration capacity, building more clarifiers. You know, we're talking a, a very expensive proposition, of which Eastline will get fifteen percent of that capacity based on the current allocations with the Tri-Town Agreement. So I, I just want to close that. I, I think Mr. Russo painted a picture, and as, you know, I can understand his position that he would want to as, as some sort of malice that, that our department has against development. I pointed out that a few developments have gone through our current regulations, they have been successful. But at this time, you know, we really can't accept anymore. Even during the, the discussion that we had with the Pennsylvania Ave development, we knew that we were going to be in a very dire situation. And I told the commission at that time, this is definitely the last development that we're going to be able to hold on to. This is the last development that we're going to be able to provide for. And we were even in consideration of denying applicants the ability to tie into the system as it came up Pennsylvania Avenue until we had the ability to get more sewer capacity. So, you know, all these things are kind of playing into, into why we had to choose the moratorium route. You know, we know that we have fluctuations in rainfall totals, that's something that you saw on the data that Mr. Russo showed you as well. We do range between one point one million gallons per day, again, with the state's capacity, to nine hundred to nine fifty. It, it's a fluctuating number, and as you can see, as someone who's trying to make sure that we don't exceed that total, I need to be very careful with you and try to tell you where we're going to be at in three to five years. It's not an easy thing to do. I hope you can appreciate that it is a little bit of a moving target, and it is based on environmental factors that we have to consider. So I, I think the, the Sewer Department, in terms of the, the tenure that I've been here, and, and certainly the, the support that I've received from Chairman Cunningham, has been great in that we have really done our homework to try to identify what we can handle and what is just too much. We do have a hundred and eighteen thousand allocated to Mr. Russo already. He's free to build his project as, as soon as he's able to. And frankly, it would be something of a relief to see that built because then we could actually understand what the implications are for the rest of the system. But right now, with that number kind of sitting out there, and, you know, I, I can't speak for the comment of the, the commission member, but we certainly all would want to know what the system would look like if this were to be built. I mean, it's, it's been green-lighted, it, it could go any day. I'm not sure why it hasn't, but that's not, not really my concern, other than the fact that it does, does make it really hard to predict what kind of sewer capacity we need to hold on to. And so that's why the Sewer and Water Department have advocated for this moratorium to allow us time to work with New London and Waterford more in earnest, to understand what a near-term project might look like and what an ultimate master plan would look like in upgrading the facility. I'm happy to answer any questions, too.
Thank you, Ben.
Yep.
Mr. Russo, did you want to revide or?
Yes, thank you for the opportunity. So, pardon?
I said, of course.
So this is actually, the charts I showed is not an allocation, it's usage. The town's uses, went, usage went down, as I said. There are no studies, there are no calculations, there's no proof that's been presented to this board as to the impact of closing the, a portion of the prison down, or the prison down, contributing to the overall number. That's just pull out of thin air. We have no idea, the engineering department has no idea how much of the, of the reversion trend is doing due to the closing or the elimination of the annex or whatever it was that got closed down over at the, at the prison. There's just no proof in the record at all. That's just an hominum. The other issue is that usage, because I talked to an engineer, the engineer we hired, and I said, well, how, why is the usage going down? Why is it going down by so much? He says, real simple, he says, do you know what a washing machine used twenty years ago? Do you know what a washing machine uses today? All the shower things that they put in, all the, the, that reduce the water, all the toilets that are all now regulated to have just so much gallons of water? Okay, there's a, every appliance that you buy, pretty much, has water efficiencies built into them. And that's a big reason why, because your town really hasn't grown that much. It, it really hasn't, if you look at the size. Relating to the, uh, this moratorium would make the balance of my property, I understand, the property, the portion of the property that I received, uh, sewer allocation, the property, the portion of the property that I received a sewer allocation after a very long fight is only about thirty-five or forty-five acres out of two hundred, out of two hundred and thirty-five acres. This moratorium is making the balance of my property worthless and unsellable. And I, I would, I would say by design. But the, the bottom line is, that's what this is, this is going to do. And I think it's really galling that you exempt all the other people in town. Everybody gets exempt from this moratorium, except for a handful of developers. Anybody can come in. So you don't, you don't upset the, the taxpayers. They can come in, they can get a sewer, they can get sewer for their house, no problem. Ten people could come in and ask for five thousand gallons each, and that's fifty thousand gallons, and would be exempt from this moratorium. But if a developer comes in and asks for fifty thousand, oh, moratorium, you don't get it. It's selective moratorium. You're picking winners and losers. But I, but again, it's not by accident. I'm sorry to be the bearer of bad news. If you were in my position and you were lied to for years and years and years, and you had to go to court, and the court backed you and said, yo, Mr. Russo, you were the guy, you were the one telling the truth. We're sorry it took twelve years to get sewer, and we're sorry it cost you hundreds of thousands of dollars. You were telling the truth, the town wasn't. So if I'm a little upset, I'm a little annoyed, that's the reason why. And it hasn't stopped. This is just the icing on the cake, this moratorium. That's all this is. And I know I haven't convinced one person on this board, because I know that you have already predetermined, just like back, back then, before we ever filed an application, and understand, you are in violation of the state Affordable Housing Regulation. You're on the list for unaffordable towns. And I've been trying everything for twenty-five years to build up there. And it's not just one roadblock that's thrown in, it's every roadblock, or every roadblock. So again, the numbers don't lie. Little smoke and mirror, all the prison closed, that's the, that's the difference. He has no idea whether that's, he has no, he has no calculations, he has no engineering to back that statement up. This is thrown out there, just like, oh, you're not in the sewer shed. Oh, yeah, you are in the sewer shed. Oh, we don't have capacity. Oh, you do have capacity. That's all it is.
Thank you, Mr. Russo. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board of selectmen tonight on this issue? I'm asking, Dan, is there anyone else who would like to address the board of selectmen on this issue? No one else. I'm going to close the hearing. Attorney, please out without being.
Yeah, you would need a motion.
Okay. So do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
We have to close the public hearing.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Public hearing is closed. Thank you. Okay, we'll move, if everyone's willing, can we move right into the regular meeting? So, good evening. Board of Selectmen, regular meeting on September third, 2025. We're in the East Line Town Hall Upper Meeting Room, and we are commencing at seven fifty-four. So we've already recited the pledge of allegiance. Are there any additional agenda consent calendar items?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I have a, a movement.
Okay.
I would like to move that we take old business F, the appointment of Mariah Knight as fire investigator, and raise that to where new business A is in the agenda, discussion on the progress of the Lozit project.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All right, you have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. And I will be able to mention at this time that the current INMA discussion and progress update is being marked over, so. Okay, are there any public delegations that would like to address the board of selectmen this evening? Being none, do I hear a motion to approve the public hearing minutes of August sixth, 2025? So move, okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion on the minutes for the public hearing of August sixth?
I'm just not present for that, so I will abstain.
You'll be abstaining, okay? Other than that, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have one abstention. Next is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of August sixth, 2025. Do I hear a motion?
Move to amend, move to amend the August sixth, 2025 regular meeting minutes as follows. Add the following to motion number four, seconded by Ms. Carlson, motion passed, four to zero.
Okay, we have an amendment. Do I hear a second? Any further discussion on the, the meeting minutes of August sixth as amended? Being none, all in favor of accepting the minutes as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
We have one abstention. Okay, thank you. All right, next, the consent calendar. Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, sorry, Dan, can we, we, we had to move to make the amendment, now we have to move to approve the minutes.
Ah, okay, yeah.
As amended.
I should have, just elaborated, you're right. Okay, thank you for pointing that out. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes as they've just been amended?
I move to approve the regular meeting minutes of August sixth, 2025, as amended.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
I have a second. Any further discussion on the minutes? Being none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
And any opposed? And one abstention, so the motion carries. Now we can move on to the consent calendar. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent calendar of June fourth, 2025?
I move to approve the consent calendar for September third, 2025, in the amount of nine thousand three hundred eighty-seven dollars and eleven cents.
Do I hear, do I, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? It's a long list, but nothing out of the ordinary. All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Okay, so now we're on to new business, and we did move F up to the top of old business. So I would invite our fire chief, Bill Bundy, to the podiums. And what we're discussing is the appointment of Mariah Knight as a fire inspector. And I wanted to make sure there was a typo on the agenda that said fire investigator, but what we're talking about is position as fire inspector.
Correct.
Okay. So if you have some comments, we would appreciate them.
Good evening. First, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Debo, for giving me a little bump up in the, in the agenda. I think it's important that, in order to discuss this, we take this as an opportunity to, to kind of inform the board. We had a little bit of a restructure of, of, of our, of our department. As you know, previously, we had the, we had a chief fire marshal, deputy chief, deputy fire marshal. And we've since had a vacancy at that deputy chief, deputy fire marshal position. So in looking at, from operationally, we decided to move in a different direction and kind of, kind of separated the two roles of, because really, one is fire marshal and one is an operational side. So with that, we've, we've promoted three of our firefighters from the line, not, no new additional hires, but we've hired three of the firefighters to the position of a shift captain. We have three shifts. That will essentially fill that second layer of supervision between the chief office and, and, and the, and the floor, so to speak. And we've decided that we're going to create that, or have that deputy fire marshal slash fire inspector position, which is what Mariah will be, will be filling. It's, it's in your packet I provided. We did have a hiring process, an interview process, to which Mariah did apply for. I'm just going to go over a little bit of what her, her qualifications are in order to do that. Mariah has been employed by the town for the past eighteen years. She's been in the public sector, public safety sector, serving as an emergency communications dispatcher, and is currently assigned to our office. She actually has been working in the office for the last several years as the administrative assistant. In addition to that, she not only provides first-line support to the first-line responders, but also the fire chief, fire marshal, and, and, and the other inspectors. In addition to serving in this town, she also serves in public service in the area towns. She holds certifications as a firefighter, firefighter one. She's emergency medical technician, she's actually an EMSI, so she helps out with some of our in-service training. So she's not stranger to our department whatsoever. She's been in the town, in the fire service, as a fire cadet, she told me, since the age of fifteen, and it has attained all those levels throughout. So she's kind of grown from within. And I'd be lying if I didn't say that she, she really keeps the office together in her current capacity. She's a huge asset for us. She has attended the officer, the State of Connecticut Officer Data Education and Management, which is the certifying agency for deputy, for marshals, fire marshals, fire inspectors, and fire investigators. And she has achieved her certifications. And in the last two years, she also has helped out tremendously with us on celebrating East Line Day. She helps out with the inspections, although she can't sign off, and, and as well as the fireworks. As part of this restructuring, I think it's important to know that she did, there was an internal process. She did meet all the requirements, and we felt that she was the best candidate to promote from within. And with that, I submit to the board, statutorily, we can hire her, but you are the appointing authority when it comes to a fire marshal, a fire, or deputy fire marshal. So I'm willing to offer any questions, but I think she's a, she's a home run for us.
And so we, as, as a fire inspector, the statute requires that we appoint.
Correct, correct.
By statute.
By statute.
Yeah, okay. Just wanted to make everybody aware of that. Okay. Does anyone on the board have any questions, Chief, on the matter?
You are proposing that she be both deputy fire marshal?
Right now, she's going to be the fire inspector. And then the next, the question will be, for the succession will be, for her to move into the deputy fire marshal position. Her current role as a fire inspector will be just doing pre-plans and fire inspection, life safety inspections. It is the hope that this will evolve into the deputy fire marshal position, which will give her the authority to actually go out and do origin and cause investigations.
So any kind of language in the motion should reflect both positions?
Correct.
So both of those positions united, they would, that appointment would expire on January fifth? Is that correct?
Is that how? Right, and then I think it's a re, and then automatically, we go, I think we just go before the clerk's office and we get reappointed.
We'll do that.
Right. I'm not familiar with that.
But it's fine, we're, we're talking about the fire inspector.
Correct, correct.
And it is only under the authority of the statute that is given to the board of selectmen, even pointer in that role.
Correct.
And if she achieves other certifications, and if she's certified, then she could be considered for.
The next, the next position as well.
Yeah, okay, very good. All right, thank you. Any other questions, Chief? Do I hear a motion?
Yes, I need to appoint Mariah Knight as a, as fire marshal slash fire inspector for the town of East Line with a term to expire on January five, two thousand and twenty-six.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second, okay? So it's only, wait a minute, it expires?
I believe it is deputy fire marshal.
Deputy fire marshal, correct.
So perhaps Ms. Hardy could amend?
That's fine. Sorry, I apologize, I'm just.
I'll, I'll read that stuff.
It is, it is, I promise, this is what she's.
I'm trying to make sure, wait, it, what is, you have a motion?
Yep.
Yes.
Too loud.
Too loud.
So it's expiring four months from now?
Mm-hmm.
That'll be reappointed.
By statute, that's how we appoint them. And then we, and every January, after an election, we do, we, every appointed position, you, you reappoint them at that point, has a new board.
I see, so we reappoint. I got you, I got you, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
Yeah. Okay. Any further discussion? Do I have a second?
Just, you clarified that was only for the inspector.
Yes.
But now we've included the assistant.
I guess my question would be, we're, at this point, her, her title would be.
Fire inspector.
Fire inspector. But if you're putting language in there, is that something that?
So I think we should amend.
Can we promote her from within, because you've, you've given that authority? Or do I need to come back? And I'm, I'm asking, because I don't know the answer to that.
Well, the way the option is written, moves to appoint Mariah Knight as a deputy fire marshal slash fire inspector. The town of East Line.
I think that should be amended to remove, should only be fire inspector.
I, I, I think it should probably be fire inspector.
Yeah.
And then when, when the, when the certification comes through, then I'll come back to the, right, and then I'll come back to the board at that point.
I withdraw my previous nomination, and now move to appoint Mariah Knight as fire inspector for the town of East Line with a term to expire on January fifth, two thousand and twenty-six.
Do I hear a second for that? We have a second. Any further discussion? There's none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I know you are on vacation, you came all the way from Rhode Island, wherever it was, and thank you for being here. Okay. As I said before, the discussion on the progress update on the East Line, East Side Against It Road Sidewalk, road improvements that will be tabled, and I believe at the next meeting. Next is INB, Adopt the Ordinance, New Sewer Connection Moratorium. So we've just witnessed the second half of the public hearing, and now it's before the board to decide whether or not we are going to issue the moratorium, moratorium.
Do we need a motion before we discuss?
Yeah, but let's, let's do it that way. Do we have some remarks about?
I'll, I'll read it.
You read the motion.
I move that the board of selectmen approve and enact the proposed ordinance titled, Ordinance Establishing Moratorium on New Sewer Connection Over Certain Limits and on Applications for Allocation of Wastewater Treatment Capacity as presented at the public hearing before the board of selectmen on August sixth, 2025, and September third, 2025, and that the effective date of this ordinance shall be ten days after newspaper publication of the notice of its adoption as provided by the town's charter.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a first and second. Okay, let's have some discussion. Yeah, we heard our presentation tonight by Mr. Russo, and also by our attorney and Mr. North. We had discussion last time, and there were some concerns, as I recall, that it was open-ended, there wasn't really a feedback loop to ensure that the Water and Sewer Commission was actually taking steps to deal with capacity issues. Some of those concerns have been addressed in the revised moratorium language. Perhaps you can go around the panel and see what your impressions or concerns are with those changes on it. Roseanne, do you want to start your round?
Sure. I think I'm not to speak directly into the microphone.
Yes, please.
So I am very familiar with this topic and request zoning. The zoning commission is my ex officio. I've sat through many meetings where this has been the topic of discussion and debate. They've heard nu, they've had numerous comments from the public regarding this, as well as their own discussion over many months. And I think that now coming to our board, we've already discussed this, I believe, at two previous meetings ourselves. So that I don't, I don't believe that there's any. So that I don't, I don't believe that there's any new information to be added. So I'll cease my comments here, and open forward to anyone else that would like to comment.
Jason, I agree, you had concerns before.
Uh, yes, I did. I feel that the concerns I voiced before were addressed by Town Council and the Water Department, so thank you for making accommodations. I am, as you guys probably picked up, a little hesitant. I have reservations when it comes to adopting moratorium. I feel that they've done a good job, and in light of Mr. Russo's comments of, you know, questionable numbers and a timeline that is kind of just rife with, with, you know, wildly differing opinions on what's happening and what should be happening. I think it's, it's incumbent upon us to go forward with a moratorium to make sure that we can figure out what these numbers should be, when they should have been that way, and allowing us a little time to figure out all this confusion. I am not privy to previous conversations before this. I only know what I've seen in these public hearings. And what I've seen so far convinces me that a temporary moratorium is appropriate.
Thank you, Jason. Yeah.
Okay, well, I agree with Jason. I did ask for the revision and take a look at a timeframe, whether or not it be three to five years. I want to be very clear that I have no support for putting any type of regulation on affordable housing coming in. I do believe that we have a substantial challenge here. So I think that putting the moratorium in place, it will give us the opportunity to take pause and, and make some of those challenges that is not in the space. So I'm comfortable with the revision, uncomfortable with the three-year warranty.
Thank you, yeah. Don, what are your thoughts?
I'm comfortable as well. I like the fact that we, we, we added initial expiration date of two thousand and twenty-eight renewable for additional periods to be necessary anyway, that we can make changes if in fact capacity does open up. I appreciate that addition.
Well, I would, I would agree with the comments, general comments made by the board. You know, I want to be, I want to be clear that although, you know, there were concerns in the past, this is a new administration, a different administration, and we're trying to be fair, fair-minded, and do the right thing. I think there are legitimate concerns as to what the true sewer capacity is, and both Mr. North and Mr. Russo make very interesting arguments, and I think the resolution of both of those arguments is that we don't really know. Mr. Russo has his own position, Mr. North has another perspective on it, and we don't really know. And before we go too much further, and maybe giving away capacity that we don't really have, and on the other hand, reserving capacity that maybe we do have, that should be used to develop and increase housing. I think we need to understand in a much better and brighter light what the reality is of sewer capacity. So I think a three-year pause with provisions in there that, you know, if, if we should discover that we do have more capacity, if we have some great success with New London, and we're able to achieve more capacity, then that gets reported to the board, and then we get to revisit this decision. So I think the prudent thing tonight is to move forward with the moratorium, with the understanding that, you know, it really is being done in good faith, and not to diminish the value of any particular developer's property, or to restrict the use in any way other than purely a concern for the actual capacity, and not giving away something we don't have. So in that regard, with those comments, I'm in favor of moving forward and approving the moratorium. So are there any other comments by the board? If not, then I'll bring it to a vote. Those in favor of instituting the moratorium signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Being none, the motion carries. The next is discussion of possible action, amending, building fees ordinance. So this was on the agenda before, and I think it was, it was, it's confabulated somehow that the lines didn't line up, and so the fees weren't entirely accurate, got moved around a little bit. So we want to correct that. Where am I? What section?
It's two C.
Two C, here we go. All right, so we have the, the new, or the corrected, you can see the old one in the back in your packet, and there, the line I had to draw for some reason. So then we have in front of us labeled two C, that is the correct version of the fees for building demolition permits. So we had approved it before, but the fees weren't. Didn't line up. So we have a motion tonight to set a public hearing to amend those, those fees. So let's see. Here we go. So that would be two D. Do I hear a motion? Go ahead.
Can we discuss this document before we move?
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
I just noticed here in the, the changes, I understand you're moving numbers around to reflect what was supposed to be there, but they have struck language from where it's siding and roofing, where it says five hundred dollars per square foot. In the corrected version, it says siding and roofing, five hundred dollars per square.
Right.
Is that deliberate? Is a square different than a square foot?
So square is, in, in building parlance, it's a, it's a ten by ten foot area.
Okay.
So if you're quoting a roof, it's a, I got three square.
Ten square feet.
Yeah, yeah. And so that's correct, and you're, you're, you got good eyes to pick that up.
Like a cord.
Pardon me?
It's like a cord of wood.
It's a cord of wood.
Yeah, it's another measurement.
It's a, it's a.
Standard.
Yeah, it's a standard measurement used by contractors and contractors. Yep. Isn't a bundle, isn't a bundle of shingles, we usually do a square? Who knows? Who knows? Okay. Maybe, anyhow. No, maybe, I don't know. Does that matter? Okay, so that's correct. Picking that up. Yeah, so any other discussion before we? Nope, I'm good. If you would.
All right. I move the following. Town of East Line Board of Selectmen notice of public hearing, notice is hereby given of a public hearing to be held by the East Line Board of Selectmen at seven P M. on September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five, at East Line Town Hall, one oh eight Pennsylvania Avenue, Niantic, Connecticut, to consider the following. One, amendments to the Town of East Line Statute one fifty point zero one five, fees for building and demolition permits, subsection A of the Town of East Line Building Ordinances. Copies of the full text of the proposed ordinance are on file for public inspection at the Office of the East Line Town Clerk, one oh eight Pennsylvania Avenue, Niantic, Connecticut, and at www dot E L Town Hall dot com, to which reference may be had. Interested persons are invited to attend and be heard, dated at East Line, Connecticut, on this third day of September twen, uh, third day of September, two thousand and twenty-five, East Line Board of Selectmen.
Okay, thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, any further discussion? Should we straighten out our, our building bees here? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, that little problem is obviously being solved. Thank you. Next, we have appointments to boards and commissions to Brookside Farm. Do I hear a motion to appoint Danielle Deeb?
Move to appoint Danielle Deeb by McKinnon Place, East Line, as a member on the Brookside Farm Museum Commission for the Town of East Line, with a term to expire on January third, two thousand and twenty-eight.
Do I hear a second? We have a second. All right, that sounds great. Any discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Being none, congratulations, we welcome Danielle to Brookside Farm.
Oh, should I abstain?
You could.
Yeah.
Thought you could be the.
Did we already vote?
Let's, well.
Just change your vote to abstain.
I changed my vote to abstention. I'm not, being married to her, I should not be using my offers to elevate her.
Okay, so let's, we'll just change the vote.
Mm-hmm. And if you're watching, honey, nothing personal.
You can't testify in this, but anyhow, okay, so, good. All right, how about, you have another motion for Emily Fiori? For the Brookside Farm.
Aye, I move to appoint Emily Fiori, five Atwood Drive, Niantic, as a member of the Brookside Farm Museum Commission for the Town of East Line, with a term to expire January fifth, two thousand and twenty-six.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Okay.
Woo, we love Emily.
I second it.
You second it?
Yes.
Feisty there, now. Okay, so, all right, any discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Great, congratulations, Emily.
I think we're all excited to meet you.
Oh. What's one?
And Danielle, I think Danielle, you both did a great job.
That's, that's great. It's good to have interest.
Indeed.
Yep. Okay, so now we'll move on to new business, and the first one is discussion of possible action, four hundred K land acquisition grant, Hossagachi Hills, Hathaway Farms, and Raven Woods. So let's see, do I hear a motion? This is for three A.
Move, or resolved, that Daniel Cunningham, first selectman of the Town of East Line, be and hereby is authorized to execute on behalf of the Town of East Line a grant agreement and conservation and public recreation easement and agreement under the open space and watershed land acquisition program with the State of Connecticut for financial assistance to acquire permanent interest in land known as Patagonia River Watershed Preserve, Roman numeral two, dash, O S W A, space, six one six, and to manage said land as open space land pursuant to section seven, dash, one three one D of the Connecticut General Statutes.
Okay, do I hear a second?
There's more.
Oh.
I have to flip it?
Oh.
As the East Line First Selectman, Daniel Cunningham serves as the Chief Executive Officer for the Town of East Line. Daniel Cunningham, First Selectman of the Town of East Line, is hereby authorized to enter into such agreements, contracts, and execute all documents necessary to said grant with the State of Connecticut. It is further certified that Daniel Cunningham, First Selectman of the Town of East Line, was elected First Selectman. His term of office began on December four, two thousand and twenty-three, and will continue to December one, two thousand and twenty-five.
Great, thank you. Now, do I hear a second?
Second.
Great. So we, so I'll start the discussion. You may recall, quite two years ago, February, after I took office, there was a land deal that was pending, it was Hathaway Farms, Hossagachi Hills, and Raven Woods. I was, it was, half, wasn't quite completed when I took over, and so we were able to complete the transaction in February, I believe it was, I think it was Valentine's there, thereabouts. So we purchased the land. Part of the, the deal was that there was a four hundred thousand dollar grant that the State of Connecticut would give to the Town of East Line if we agreed to do certain things, put a, you know, an easement on it to restrict the use of it for open space. There were some complications with the, I don't know what I'm saying, complications with the negotiations leading up to the purchase or the sale, and there were some items that had to be resolved and completed so that we could actually get the four hundred thousand dollar grant. We are finally in a position, the State of Connecticut has finally agreed that we have adequate access to that property, which will entitle us to that grant. The initial grant was assigned over to us from the developer that was, that sold us the property, it was actually the East Line Land Trust that sold it to us. But we had to take some further steps to actually put us in a position to get the money. Those steps have been taken, which was the most important part, was showing adequate access. There are some perfunctory steps that need to be completed before we actually can receive the grant. This is some work that has to be done by a surveyor, just to identify some of the boundary lines, but that will be completed, and so once that is done, I want to be in a position to sign the grant, so we can receive the money from the State of Connecticut. So tonight, I'm asking for authority from the board to allow me to sign that paperwork. And that's, that's where we are this evening. Glad to answer any questions.
Okay, have we closed on that?
Yeah, we own it. Yeah, we own it, but we're trying to get the, the grant money, there were some, I don't know, disparage, there's some things that weren't done, and I, we were, I was able to get, were able to get them resolved, and now we're in a position to actually get the four hundred thousand dollar grant, so, which is good news to the town. The things that are left to be done are just perfunctory. Biggest thing was gaining access to various areas so people could actually use it, but that's, that's been accepted by the state. So basically, I'm asking for permission to sign the necessary grant paperwork so that we can receive that money. Other questions? All glad to address. If not, then all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Being none, motion carries. All right. The next is the discussion of possible action, two seventy-eight Main Street Dominion lease. Do I hear a motion?
Move the following. Resolved that Daniel Cunningham, First Selectman of the Town of East Line, be and hereby is authorized to execute on behalf of this municipal corporation a second amendment to lease agreement by and between Dominion Energy Nuclear, Connecticut Incorporated, and the Town of East Line, Connecticut. As the East Line First Selectman, Daniel Cunningham serves as the Chief Executive Officer for the Town of East Line. Daniel Cunningham, First Selectman of the Town of East Line, is hereby authorized to enter into such agreements, contracts, and execute all documents necessary to said grant with State of Connecticut, the State of Connecticut. It is further certified that Daniel Cunningham, First Selectman of the Town of East Line, was elected First Selectman. His term of office began on December fourth, two thousand and twenty-three, and will continue to December first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
So let me give some background. We're all aware of the old police station on Main Street, and we have a lease for one dollar a year to occupy that premises. One of the issues was that there was concern that there were toxins either in the building or underneath, or in the, underneath the parking lot, and we were successful with the help of Nick Menapace to get a two hundred thousand dollar grant to do what they call a phase one and a phase two exploration of that property. Phase one is really more of a paperwork look at the property, but a phase two is actually digging into the ground, digging into the walls of the building, sampling the air, all the things that you would do to identify if there's any toxins present. Because of the state of the law, even though we have the opportunity to purchase that building from them for, I believe it's a dollar, we don't want to be in the chain of title. We don't want to own the building if, if there are some serious concerns about toxins that would have to be remediated. Anyone in the chain of title could be responsible to remediate. So it would be irresponsible for us to take title to that property without knowing what is there. This grant will allow us. Uh, this grant will allow us to find out, and then we will be able, as a board, as a town, make an informed decision if we want to acquire that property. So we have the money, we have the grant to do the phase one and phase two. What we didn't have was the permission to go on site and actually dig up, dig some holes in the parking lot, dig into the building, and see what's there. Um, I was able to negotiate with Dominion, and I want to thank them and their representatives that were very helpful. Uh, they have finally agreed, and in this document, they give us permission to do just that. They extend the, the lease for two years, uh, so that there'll be, it won't take anywhere near that amount of time to accomplish the, the, the study. But they want to make sure, uh, state of Connecticut does, that, uh, you know, that there wouldn't be any hold, that we, the, the grant money wouldn't have been all expended, and, and now we've lost, uh, possession or to build one to the property. So they wanted a two-year lease. So they agreed to that, Dominion agreed to that, and I thank them, and they're very gracious to do that. And they also, uh, agreed to let us finally, um, go in and see what's there. They had resisted for years and years, but I think, uh, we came to an understanding that really was in everybody's interest, uh, to find out the status of that property. So, this lease allows us to do that, gives us permission, and it extends the lease for two years. And that is the final step, uh, along with the grant, to moving forward on that building. So I would ask the board to give me permission tonight to sign the lease.
May I just add, um, a, a public thank you, uh, regarding, um, moving that grant forward? Wasn't Niantic Main Street very involved with that?
Niantic Main Street was, was very helpful, um, they were very interested, and, uh, yes, yep.
They were very involved with that grant, so.
They were.
This is the second time that it's been noted, um, and they've been omitted, so I want to make sure that we give them credit where credit is due.
Yes, thank you, no, that's right.
The terms of the lease are still the same for the two years?
For me?
The, the terms of the lease are still the same?
Other than the two years and the language that, uh, surrounding allowing us on the premises to to, to do, explore.
Dig.
To dig, yeah. Um, we do agree that we will restore the, the premises to, you know, if we, if we sample some sheet rock, we'll fix the sheet rock. If we, uh, dig up the holes in the parking lot, we would repair those. We are, uh, agreeing to, to do that, but, uh, um, yeah, hope that answers.
Yeah, just FYI, all the sheet rock and all this kind of-
Yeah. And there's liability issues that, you know, we've gone, our lawyers and their lawyers have gone back and forth, but, and, uh, that are, um, agreeable to both sides, so. Okay, then, uh, we'll call the vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Being none, motion carries. Very good. All right, now, onto the thorniest issue of the night, which is the, uh, Black Hawk lease renewal. So.
Black Hawk.
Huh?
Black Hawk.
What did I say?
Black Hawk.
Oh, Black Hawk.
I'm sorry.
I'm thinking of the river. All right, the Black Hawk lease renewal. So, um, maybe just a little background, there, there are four.
Need a motion first?
Yeah, let's have the motion, then we'll talk.
Uh, anybody want to take this?
Who wants to do the motion?
Oh, pick me.
I miss you.
Moved the following. Resolved that the First Selectman is authorized to execute a lease between the Town of East Line and the leaseor, and, as leaseor, and Black Hawk Fishing Enterprises Incorporated, as leasee, for a portion of the dock and related area known as lease number four in the Cheney Park lease areas, for a term of two years and two, two-year options to renew.
Second.
All right, we have a second. So, let's have some discussion. So down where, uh, the votes are ward, uh, there are four, uh, four lease areas. Um, three of them, uh, have leases, and there was, uh, there was misplaced, so, uh, we're, today I re-sign original copies of the other three leases, and the, uh, leaseholders will come in and they will sign it, and we will make sure that in the future those original leases will be kept in a safe place, and so we don't lose track of where they are. Um, this is the fourth lease, and, uh, inadvertently it expired on twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-four. There was an option to renew. Uh, they didn't exercise the option, um, but we've, uh, reached out to them, and, uh, we're going to issue a new lease to them. It'll be, as we say, it's a two-year lease? It's, uh, the lease will be for three years with two, three-year options to renew.
That's not what the motion says.
What's the motion say?
The motion says it is a two-year-
Two-year.
And two, two-year options to renew.
Okay, it's two, two, okay, yeah, the, these are the common.
Is this supposed to be three?
No, it was, so, the other, the other leases were, I believe, three-year leases.
Correct.
So what we want, and so to avoid all this confusion in the future, where, where we have leases expiring and other ones that haven't expired, we want to get them all on the same date. So, uh, when the date comes, we will know that there are four leases that the Board of Selectmen have to be looking at, and, uh, and I think it'll help those that are leasing those spaces to help remember that, you know, oh, they have to, you know, say that they want to renew the option. So we wanted to get them all on the same date. So that's why we're just changing, um, the term for this, for the Black Hawk lease, so it'll end up on the same date as the other three. Um, and we are still giving them the option to renew, uh, as they had in, in the previous lease. So, we're just trying to make it so it'll be a lot smoother down the road for the future, and give them the opportunity to, to, you know, keep their boat at that slope. Don't know why, um, they didn't renew it, but, um, it was an oversight, so, um, want to get productive and get a valid lease on the books, so, um, looking for authority to, to sign the lease with them. Any concerns or questions? I know you're not happy.
Well, no, I'm happy.
You're okay, you're happy.
I'm all right. I just want to let you know that I had a, recently had a chance to use the facility down there. The docks and killer seals.
Got a wet of seals.
Yeah, but anyway, uh, I was there early, setting up to collect tickets and stuff like that, and, uh, so I saw. Great, yeah, it is, but however, I found out when walking through the Greg, that when it came time to rebuild those docks, that we did it, meaning that not dock people, the town did, which was why I was in good faith.
Yeah.
But however, non-pressured treated wood was used, and also not stainless steel hardware was used. So we need to look at that in the future as far as-
Yep.
Working something out there as far as capital improvements, because this, we have enough legal.
Well, this-
We don't want anybody to, we do the right thing down there, because no one, we can't use that dock for anything else. We can't use that recreation, because the people can't, cannot, cannot dock there.
Right.
Because of the current.
Right.
It's a great application for his size boat. Now they've experienced the service, uh, it's, it's, it's a nice attribute to the town.
Yep.
Okay.
No, we're very fortunate to have that space, and now that the construction is done on the bridge, and, uh, we've got four, four spots there. So, hopefully this will correct it, so there won't be any confusion in the future, and, uh, I'll move it to a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Being none, motion carries. That's good. Okay. So next, item three C, three D, possible action on cannabis tax projects budget. And our finance director, Kevin Gervais, is here tonight to help explain the concept here.
Cannabis?
Yeah, we got some cannabis. Got some samples.
Last thing we need right now.
Really? Okay.
Six inches?
Maybe a foot, like, drill right here. No, I don't need that, we're good. Nice and easy.
Great.
Okay.
So could you give us some overview, Kevin, about this cannabis tax and?
Absolutely. So, um, the document I just passed out to the board, um, is from the Office of Legal Research, Legislative Research, um, at the state of Connecticut. Um, this is the document I, I asked them to provide, uh, for grant guidance on the local cannabis tax. So as everyone is probably aware, there is a cannabis dispensary on the never-each-shred-weet west side of town, and, um, as such, the town gets three percent, um, tax in, in the form of, you know, a grant, um, for the town to spend. So, um, in this research report, on the last page, if you just flip it right over, um, there's where does the tax revenue go? So this breaks down the six uses, um, for municipalities for this cannabis funding. First one, streetscape improvements, other neighborhood developments. Number two, educational programs, youth deployment, training programs in the municipality, services for individuals recently released from Department of Corrections custody, probation or parole, mental health or addiction services, youth service bureaus, municipal juvenile review boards, and then community service civic engagement efforts. So what we have here tonight, okay, so real quick, um, the first one we'll talk about is the revenue we've been bringing in, uh, from the cannabis. So, um, we're averaging, if we take out that first, that first month, yes, um, the portrait. Um, you'll notice we've collected to date seventeen thousand, two hundred and eight dollars. That does not include the month of July, which we have not received yet. Um, I'm estimating for the rest of the year, just shy of three thou, I'm sorry, four thousand dollars a month, um, in anticipated, uh, revenues, which would bring us just shy of sixty-five thousand dollars for the year. So with the anticipated, uh, budget appropriation of twenty-five thousand, that'll leave about thirty-nine to forty thousand in this fund, um, to be spent on other projects just for this year. As long as that, um, dispensary stays open, we'll keep collecting the three percent on the recreational cannabis, not medical, just the recreational side.
Recreation.
Just the recreational.
Yeah.
And the state of Connecticut keeps the other seventeen percent of that. So, you know, we get three, they get seventeen. Um, so, there is a list here of our proposed projects, um, the landscape portion. So project one, uh, waypoint signage, um, at the new EV charger stations, um, in the two municipal lots. Um, community gardening, rain gardens, and green infrastructure. Um, you'll notice Town Hall in the front has been renovated with new ADA ramp. Um, there is some crabgrass in the front of the building. Um, there was a nice garden there, a community garden before that ramp went in. I think the idea is to put something like that back in there and work on, uh, green infrastructure and some community enhancements and streetscape improvements. Uh, volunteer appreciation and recognition, um, various community engagement efforts, and then, um, an elderly and a youth outreach and engagement, right? So, those are two groups we've talked about, I don't know how many times in the budget process, um, so allocating some funds there. And then the last one, um, civic and community engagement, um, arts and culture. Maybe bring in, um, you know, the arts commission, make the building, um, what was the word, Dan, for Town Hall and Community Center? Make it like a, almost like a gallery kind of thing, or?
Maybe have some art space, uh, you know, maybe.
Some, hang some, you know, local artists' artwork, something like that.
And those hanging systems, kind of like what they have at Cafe Soul, they have hanging system.
That's outstanding. Can I just circle back, though, for the youth and elderly, uh, uh, bullet point? Because that kind of brings me back to the budget, where we're talking about what the projected revenue is going to be to help fund acquisitions, um, so I don't know if that's something that we could actually revisit, that would be great.
Um, we could. Uh, so, we're anticipating sixty-five thousand just from this. Um, the bigger, um, grant source, so to speak, is that opioid settlement. We're nearing two hundred thousand in that fund, um, whether you fund, I mean, that fund's going to go through through twenty thirty-nine, I believe, so that one would be more appropriate to spend. Um, as long as this one's functional, you know, operational, um, we'll keep getting this revenue as well, so those are, those aren't really one-time revenues, so that would be a
Hey.
A decent, yeah, yeah.
I hope my mic is working. Apparently it was not. I don't know if I-
I think all of us had the problem.
So, I, I don't think, if you, if you can't hear yourself kind of echo a little bit, you're not getting picked up online.
Okay.
Under the arts and culture and community enhancement, could some of that money, uh, go towards our celebration of the two hundred and fiftieth? For decoration, uh, for-
As long as it fits into one of those six categories down below, um, and it doesn't have recurring costs. So the idea behind this is it's a one-time expenditure, so really, I mean, we could do recurring costs if we wanted to, but the idea of this twenty-five thousand that we're projecting, or we're budgeting here in this proposal, is one-time cost, so there's no recurring expenses in any of these projects, right? So the idea would be, you know, for like, such as the rain garden or the front of this building, you're planting perennials. Once you plant them, it's kind of set and forget, right?
Well, that would be perfect, because obviously the two hundred and fiftieth's only going to be for one year.
So if there's no recurring costs or impacts on the budget, then we don't have to go through the appropriation process?
We have to, we go through a streamlined appropriation process that was developed under the charter revision.
Yeah.
So as long as we don't incur any multi-year expenses, the Board of Selectmen has the approve, uh, the authority to approve grant expenditures that don't impact future budgets.
Can I ask a question about how you arrived at the approximate four thousand dollars a month?
Yep, so, um, uh, I knew someone would question this. So, if you look, um, kind of middle of the page there, it says the average from March through June. So I took the average from March, April, May, and June. I did not, I, I thought the front one, the first one there was kind of an outlier. Um, and this is also, just taking into account, this is, um, you know, kind of peak season for the Town of East Line, you know, it's season out, seasonal residents are here, um, so it could go down. Um, I guess we'll know more when July comes in.
Right, if we have like a year of data, then it'd be a lot easier to calculate that average.
Correct, correct. So I just took the most recent months available, and, you know.
I'm surprised how fluctuated. I, I thought it would be more level, but I guess in the summertime, people are recreating more?
I couldn't, I did not quite understand the discrepancy between May and June. Uh, you'd think June would be a little more than May, um, but I don't, whatever.
It is what it is.
It is what it is.
So, so these are some nice smaller projects that we can do without money, and, uh, enhance, uh, the community. I think, I'm very nice with the community gardening, you know, we have this space out here formed by the new ramp, is that square there? Perhaps, you know, we can, uh, I have spoken with Marjorie Mekoff, and there's some interest, what?
I was just going to mention her name.
Yeah, yeah, and, uh, trying to see if she can reserve, uh, space in their schedule to maybe in the fall. I don't know when the best time to do that. That's, but they know how to do it. Anyhow, um, yeah, so a lot of nice, nice little things, volunteer appreciation, we can, uh, maybe, uh, you know, we'll have a, maybe, a little gathering to, for the volunteers, we'll be looking for ideas, people we should invite to something like that. So anyhow, um, any other questions? All right, so we have a motion, uh, so second.
No, we don't.
We don't? We didn't make a motion?
I moved to appropriate twenty-five thousand dollars from the local municipal cannabis tax collected to be expended on projects as presented and attached hereto as an exhibit.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, so we had the discussion first. Uh, is there any further discussion? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Oh, anyone object? Any abstentions? All right.
Have a good night.
Kevin, thank you. Thank you for staying late and helping us out with this. I appreciate the offer. Excuse me, Ann, did you get a copy of this?
Yes, I did.
You have it? Okay, I want to be sure you did. Okay, um, we can start with ex officio reports of, Roseanne, any?
Zoning meets tomorrow night. Um, one of the items on their agenda is, um, approval, uh, for Parks and Rec for a special permit, or discussion of whether they'll approve it. Uh, special permit for the Darrow Pond, uh, project, which was presented to us some time ago for a potential dog park. I drove up there today, and I noticed that the sign was, uh, posted for, uh, public hearing, but there wasn't a description on there as to what the public hearing would be for. So I'm going to call Parks and Rec tomorrow, because I suspect that there won't be very many people showing up for the public hearing, if they don't know what the public hearing is about.
Okay.
So, I'll, uh, once I get an answer, I'll call your office.
Great. Thank you.
That's it.
Jason?
So the Harbor Management Shellfish Commission had some questions about the trailer that's used for the Harbor Masters boat. The brakes were not working, they didn't know what to do. So I've sent an email to Public Works and they instantly pounced on it and got the whole thing going. And it was efficient and seamless and effortless and I want to commend them on that, so thank you for that. Also, Stars to Stem, the Planetarium is going to have a show this Friday, a musical, and they also have a new show in the Route, in the Retinue, where they talk about what's going on in the night sky on that particular day, using the Planetarium, so expanding programming. Brookside Farm Museum had some great musical programming over the summer and there is one more show left on nine twenty-one. A band called Rebel Sheep is going to play there. And there's been a lot of changes with the Brookside Farm Museum and our director, sorry, curator, and a perch is going to try to come to the next Board of Selectment meeting and give kind of a state of the farm address just to let people know kind of what's happening with that town property.
Great, thank you, Jason. Candace?
I have nothing.
Okay, Don?
Wellsco, they're, got some money in the bank and they're in the process of trying to decide to rebuild their existing boat or buy a new one. Small boat, for Shellfish Water. And hopefully convince them to do something that has a warranty and long life. Whether they're trying to rebuild something else in saltwater environment, but, yeah, it's still up for discussion, but they're about ready to buy a boat.
Great. Okay, thank you. Well, so while we're on boats, First Selectman's report. I don't know if I mentioned last time, you know, we have this little sixteen-foot Boston Whaler that's been sitting in the garage at the fire, firehouse for years and hasn't been operational. And as I may have mentioned before, we had a couple of instances where we, we needed a small rescue boat. And so Chief Bundy quoted out and arranged for a motor to be put on the boat and we've had some help. So I don't know if it's down there being installed right now, I've got to ask him when he was here. But in the next week or so, we'll have a seventy-horse, four-cycle Yamaha motor on that boat. And four-cycle is important because it's less polluting in the river than a two-cycle motor. And it'll allow us to have that capability, you know, where that boat is stationed in the firehouse on Grand Street, it's four and a half minutes away from the boat launch. So if there were a water emergency, they would have the ability to get that into the water and it's a very solid, safe boat. So I'm excited about that for them and, and as you heard earlier tonight, we've had some structural changes in the fire service that is improving it. I'm excited about that, I think it'll just add to the depth and the capability of the fire service around the clock. Three, three shifts, twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. We are still working on the SAFER Grant, which is a federal grant, which would allow us to hire three additional firefighters. That'd be one for each shift and they would pick up part of the cost for that and it would, there'd be a phase in over three, three years. So it would allow us to get our staffing up to even more.
Where are we at with the overtime on that Saturday? With the cost up on that?
So I don't, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but, yeah, so the, the way, I mean, I think the overtime budget is running higher than we would have hoped at this time. Part of the reason for that though was, you know, we've had the project up on Route one sixty-one. And there was a period of several weeks where at night they completely shut down Route one sixty-one. So we really needed two complete fire companies on either side of that road because they couldn't get from one side to the other. So we, we had to have additional firefighters on, available on either side, so.
No question, my, my, my thought is just the sustainability would be, it's just kind of going off in my head because going forward, it's, it's going to be very difficult to sustain those numbers and that money in the budget. So it's something that we should take a look at.
It, it is something that we're looking at and we do have negotiations again this year. And I negotiated the IAFF contract last year, but was already a year and a half behind.
Yeah.
When I nego, yeah. So we'll be negotiating again and, yeah, that's one of the topics, we don't know where that will go. But the other way to help solve that problem is to have more part-time firefighters. So we are, I believe today, I had Stacy, HR Director, post that on the website.
So will the additions of the new positions offset the overtime? Because we can realize those people, right?
They're not new people, so in other words, they, the captains' positions, which are you talking about? The captains or the, or if we get the SAFER Grant? So the idea with the SAFER Grant, we, we want to increase the staffing to the extent that we can. So we would like to have five, let's see, yeah, five on shift instead of four on shift?
Right, but will that offset the, the money that's going on the overtime on that side?
It might, you know, I don't want to comment on it till I figure out the, do the math. But if you have a fifth person, then, you know, if, if your requirement is that you always want to have four people on shift. But if you have that fifth person and someone calls out, then, yeah, you might only have four that night. But now you're not mandating someone in and increasing your overtime. So I think it'll have the effect of helping the overtime budget. Without having all the numbers in front of me, I wouldn't want to comment on it. But that would help and also if we can add other part-timers to our employ, so they can fill shifts, that will help as well, so. And we're looking at that. The other, other thing I want to mention in my report, there's a lot going on down at the interchange, the, the bridge and Route one sixty-one. In the next week or two, they will be shutting down old Exit Seventy-four. So if you get your kicks driving down that exit, well, do it now because once it's shut down, that will not, the one they're using now will not be open again. That'll be shut down permanently. And in approximately two weeks, the new Exit Seventy-four, hopefully it'll be two weeks, they'll be able to reopen it. You can see now when you drive down there, there are, it looks like, you know, a highway coming off of the main highway and it's just chopped off and, you know, there's boards and things holding material falling out. That's going to be completely, that they'll, that's where the, the rest of the new Exit Seventy-four will be. So if you drive by, you'll be able to see it, it's, it's, you know, seventy percent built. So when they shut down the old Seventy-four, they'll tear that apart and then go through and rebuild the remaining section of the new Exit Seventy-four. And they're hopeful that that'll be about a two-week window for that to reopen. So there's a lot going on and then, then the next phase will be tearing down the final section of that bridge and opening up I ninety-five. So the new bridge that they just built, I think mid-October, they'll have the deck hanging in the concrete on top of that. And so they'll be able to shift the other lane now, so everything on I ninety-five will be carried by the new bridge. And then they'll take down the remaining section of the old bridge and then finally build the final section. So, yeah, we're, we're about fourteen months away from completion probably, about fifteen months away. So that's my report. We did have some communications, we had a thank you letter for the Board of Selectmen from one of the scholarship recipient. It's in your packet, it says, this is for Kai Jolly Valentine, Valentine? How do I pronounce it?
Valentine.
Valentine. Okay. Dear Eastlime Board of Selectmen, I would like to thank you for awarding me the Eastlime Board of Selectmen Government Studies Scholarship. This generous prize will be very useful in my adventures at Hamilton College where I'll be studying government and history. I hope that you have a wonderful summer, so you're very gracious to her to thank us for that. All right, I don't, is there any public comment this evening? I think there is, so there's no response, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn the September third, twenty twenty-five regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen at nine o'clock.
All right, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? All right, motion carries, now we have to sign a few.
Sign.